Ready?
Six o'clock, I'm ready.
Recording.
Good evening. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park press in the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise for the salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, number one. Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nineteen authorizing the sale of block one oh one point twelve, lot one sixty-eight to adjoining property owners.
Ordinance of the township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the sale of block one oh one point one two, lot one sixty-eight on the municipal tax map to Scott Minter and Elizabeth A. Griggs and Philip Weller in accordance with provisions of NJSA forty A. Colon twelve dash thirteen B. This is second reading, open the floor to public comment.
Say no, make a motion to close the floor.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty authorizing the sale of block one thousand two point oh one, lot one oh one to the county of Ocean.
Ordinance of the township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the sale of block ten oh two point oh one, lot one point oh one to the county of Ocean in accordance with NJSA forty A. Colon twelve dash thirteen B. Second reading, open the floor to public comment.
Say no, make a motion to close the floor.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Here's what we're here for. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash two thirty-five appointing police officers.
Resolution of the township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the appointment of Ryan V. Zacco and John E. Terella as full-time police officers with the township of Lacey.
Move it.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
I'd like to call Chief Kenny up and give some backgrounds on these two new township young gentlemen.
Thank you. Yes.
Do I need a microphone?
Your voice carries.
Just talk loud.
So, I want to thank everyone for coming out. You know, friends, family, fellow officers. This is a great important day. We've been increasing our agency up to fifty officers. So I really want to thank the committee of Mayor Juliana, Ron and I, our business administrator, township administrator. This is a plan in place that's going to get us to where we need to be. The committee's been, you know, gracious in supporting us and helping us implement this plan. I can tell you, it's a very efficient yet effective process. There's no money being wasted, there's no positions that we're in for no reason. The job and role of a police officer has changed throughout the years since I see some retired guys out here that I know. It has changed, that's changed in my time. It's a really intense job. You know, we're expected to do a lot, little, little. All, most calls now are at least two extra calls. Here's another. There's a whole lot more to do. Body more cameras, that just adds on to the amount of time that officers spend off the road. And we wanted to ensure that we have adequate staffing out there, that, you know, the streets are protected, the neighborhoods are protected, and that we provide the best possible, you know, law enforcement agency and services to the residents of the township of Lacey. Getting us up to a certain, you know, to a level of adequate personnel is important, and it's only fair to the officers because it gives them reassurance that they're not going to be overstressed, overworked, that they can perform their jobs knowing that they have enough backup, they have enough training, they have enough supervision. But it's also fair to the families that worry about the officers and to the residents and community of Lacey Township. So what I mean by that is, you're going to have a well-rested, you know, reduced-stress officer that's going to respond and provide services to the residents of Lacey Township. People call up. If you have a problem, if you have an issue, if you just want a professional, well-rested, well-trained, you know, officer that's going to respond and provide the best possible services and services, that's what we're looking for. So that's, I can assure that these are not just extra positions. It's definitely what is needed for our agency and our community. I can attest that. I'm born and raised in Lacey, taxpayer in Lacey, and my kids go to school in Lacey, so there's no waste happening here, it's just very necessary. So, I do appreciate, you know, the committee's support, you know.
One hundred percent.
As always. And like I said, you know, none of this happens without the citizens, you know, residents of Lacey Township. So thank you so much for your support as always. We can always say, and we always, all of our officers know that we have the support of the community. It's not a doubt, there's no doubt that we're for the committee, we're for the community, and so we're so grateful for that. So that being said, what am I going to do? I'm going to introduce the first officer. My captain, Captain Sullivan will introduce the second officer, but I just want to give it over you. So these two officers, you're getting the best of the best, that's what we're looking for. It's trying to fill the positions of police officers isn't easy anymore. The job's not in demand like it used to be. There's a lot of scrutiny, you know, out there in the United States worldwide when it comes to law enforcement. It's a twenty-five or thirty-year investment that we're asking of these officers. It's unlike other, you know, jobs and careers where you might work somewhere for two years, five years, ten years. Here is a twenty-five or thirty-year investment. It takes about, we talked about it, Sergeant Berlai and I who oversee the field training, Lieutenant Flynn as well, it's about seven years to get a well-rounded officer to that level of experience. So it's a big investment. We just don't want, A, I'm going to try law enforcement, maybe I'll like it, maybe I won't. We want somebody who's dedicated to the township, and I know these two gentlemen are. So, as I always say, they're the best people for the job. That's what we're looking for. We're not looking for either the best, you know, male, female, it's the best person for the job. And I can guarantee you, the amount of time and effort that RNC puts into the backgrounds, background investigators, or the technical bureau, you know, they put hours and hours looking into this, we put them through an portal, you know, portal-driven interview process to which, you know, we get down to them in a hurry and ask them what they, you know, what they're going to provide for us, not what they are. And they want to be here, these two officers come trained, they're full-time officers in other jurisdictions right now, and they still want to come to Lacey to see where their heart and soul is. So I can attest that. You're getting two fine officers. That being said, can I call the first officer?
Sure, sure, go right ahead.
Officer Ryan Zacco. So, Ryan Zacco, twenty-five years old, Lacey resident, graduated from Lacey Township High School in twenty sixteen. Went to Ocean County College, associates in science, and then went to Stockton University. It was, sorry, oh, it's not there. It's changed now, everything's changed lately. So, he got a, um, his degree in business studies. So, yeah, a bachelor's in science and business studies in twenty twenty. So he comes, you know, well-educated, he started his career in Spring Lake as a class one officer. Then went to, that's why I'm a class two officer, worked there for a while, brief, a brief time nap seeking as a class two, trying to seek a full-time position, and then he got this full-time job in Plumstead, that's where he was working up until yesterday. Full-time police officer with Plumstead. So, he, I can tell you, you know, a couple other, you know, good things about Ryan. His heart and soul's here. He interviewed us for three times. First for a special position, a second for a third-time position, third is the position he's got today. He, it's been a tough interview, it's not where we just put you under stress to yell at you, we can give you some factual information that a lot of people don't want to hear, they don't want, you know, they want to know their truth and not the real truth, and we can say that Ryan took that information, and he took it to heart, to the point where his own supervisor in Plumstead said, hey, this guy is a completely different guy than when he first started. And that's due to, you know, he was young, he was a new officer, he's got his confidence, and, you know, came back from our interview and kind of blew us away. He really wants to be here, he's dedicated to this town, he's dedicated to the career in law enforcement, and we're, you know, so happy to have him. One last thing I can say, his family's in law enforcement, his grandfather is a retired retired captain, couldn't be here today, but I know he's extremely, extremely happy for Ryan.
That's wonderful. If the family wants to come up and stand by him, I'm going to swear I'm in.
Repeat after me. Thank you. I, Ryan V. Zacco.
Aye, Ryan V. Zacco.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
Form all the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I have true faith, allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
To the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
And the authority of the people, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome to the family.
Sure. In the front center. Chief Kenny. John Jack Terella. I've known, I've known Jack here since, since he's been about four years old. This is, this is important for us, and we thank you very much for the opportunity to stand here today and do this. Getting us up to fifty is a huge number for the organization, it's the most we've ever had, and it's definitely needed and necessary, so thank you. Without your guys' support, we wouldn't be able to do this. So tradition in law enforcement is always tradition, right? So, it's, I'm happy to stand up here and introduce Jack here, John, I'll call him his proper name, as the sixth police officer in Lacey Township whose father also worked here. So, just when the town thought they were going to get rid of the Sullivan's, Flins' and Flynn's, in the last two years, we added a trans, and we've added Terella now. So with the next twenty-five to thirty years, the town is going to, is going to stand, stand watch by these gentlemen, and we couldn't be more proud to have them. So as the chief said about the interview process, the morning of the interview, I had, I decided to go one of two different ways. I really thought about what Jack's dad did to me. And I really wanted to crush him in the interview, and I gave him one good thing, and I was like, you know what, he's doing such a nice job, and he's, he's actually, he's a genuine, genuine young man, we're happy to have you, you're an ultimate professional, you handled it as smooth as I've ever seen it. And I said, all right, I'll stop, because I do have to work with him a little. Unlike his dad, who didn't stop. Twenty-four years ago, so. All joking aside, we're very happy to have you here today. So John Terella, twenty-four years old, he is a resident of Lacey Township, has been his entire life, graduated from Lacey Township High School in two thousand eighteen with, and at that point went on to Stockton University, graduated two thousand twenty-two with a criminal justice degree, Eagle Scout, has been a representative of the township for a long time with the Eagle Scout program, started career with Ship Bottom, I get these two confused, Ship Bottom, went to class one and class two in Ship Bottom, New Jersey, and then got hired full-time at the Harvey Cedars Police Department, and he worked until yesterday. We welcome you, we're excited to keep this tradition going, and I assure you that maybe you'll, well, I hope that one time, maybe you'll see one of these grandkids here. Of the names previously mentioned, so that'll probably be on your time, that won't be on my time. Congratulations to you and the family. Thank goodness, we, you know, we, I'm happy to have you, we're happy that you were able to, you know, this list worked out for everybody, and we're looking forward to this continuing on, and this, you know, this tradition continuing on. So, as his dad, retired Lieutenant Scott Terella, who's in the audience today, and has been an influence on all of our lives here, we thank you, and we, you know, we're looking forward to this, this opportunity for you.
Let's join music.
Repeat after me. I, John E. Terella.
Aye, John E. Terella.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will bear, I'm sorry, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome to the family. Committee comments?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor, would you like to comment?
I would, Mayor, and thank you for the kind words for all of our new officers and people. Lots been said tonight about lineage and family history, fathers, past lieutenants, captains, things like that. I hope that our captain here tonight wasn't just telling you to go have a few babies tonight. Keep that line, you guys are young guys, you got some time yet. It's a lot of work. I love my daughter, it's a lot of work, a lot of money too, but she's, she's worth it. But, you know, one of the families I know really well tonight, and one I don't know, but for Ryan and our new officers here, you know, for you to have a captain in your, in your midst, and to be coming from another department, it's not only a great hire here, and this is a gentleman that's trained already, went through an academy. When I tell you, when we, this is my twelfth, eleventh year here, and to see this room filled with blue, I love it. And I say the same thing, and this is for both of you guys, and I'll address the Terella family. I hope God walks with you every step of the way. I've seen some of these gentlemen come up, it's been heartfelt, and it feels like family. We have skin in this game because they protect my family and my daughter too, and they ride by my house, so I'm very, very grateful, and I'm going to be as supportive as I always have. As far as Terellas go, I just have such high respect for Scott Terella. I met him several years ago, I served with him on our board here internally, you know, and when, when he talked, he, he has a way that he jokes, but he imparts a lot of wisdom. I always appreciated it. So I was quiet, I learned some really good stories, I learned some great stuff about the town. I think he should write a book one day. Always, always. You use a pen name, always, always respectful, always respectful to everyone. And when I, I saw the name here on our agenda tonight, I'm just really happy, and to come from a lineage of, of police officers, it means a lot. There's skin in the game. So I'm going to just say to you guys, you know, without getting choked up, God bless you, I love you, and I'm so proud of you, every single one of you. To our new guys, a guy gave me a good advice many, many years ago, try to keep your mouth shut a little and your ears open, every one of these gentlemen, and those that aren't here tonight, those who are out on the road, you have a wonderful command staff, listen to the words and the wisdom, you're going to be well-served. Thank you, and God bless you.
Mr. Dykoff?
So, a lot of things. First of all, I'm going to address Captain Sullivan and Chief Kenny. I've been here twenty years, and over the twenty years, we've tried to get the department up to where we knew it needed to be, and, and a lot of things contributed to that, retirements, budgets, things like that. So it's fortunate that we're at this point in time, and it all started with these two gentlemen who came before us and presented a plan. And it was, it was an amazing plan, and we as committee have tried to see that through, so you thank us, but we thank you too. So, I listened to Chief Kenny, and he said, this is a job unlike any other. And to put it mildly, how many jobs do you have where your fellow officers show up? How many jobs do you have where your family comes and participates in your hiring? And then, the other thing that I always like to see is, I love to look at the families, and of course, I know the Terellas, and now I know Sacco's family, his cousin who looks just like him. And I like to see the pride in that, but I like to see the pride in all the people who come, the family, who come to see you get hired. I know you'll do great. It's amazing, and again, for twenty years, I've watched, you know, us hire people, and while the pool has gotten smaller, the quality has gotten just amazing. I, you know, I listen to the history and the experience, and I'm just, I'm just utterly amazed. We've got a fantastic department, you're joining a great department with great leadership, I wish you the best in the world. Thank you for your families for giving it, and one thing, because Terella has recently got engaged? Congratulations on that.
Mr. Kennis?
Thank you. Yeah, we'd like to welcome you both to the Lacey Township Police Department. You both, I always say that it's great to have the built-in knowledge base for, have locals that have grown up here and went to the schools here, and they always say that they know where all the hiding spots are. And you, since you both have a background, your, your parents have backgrounds in law enforcement, you couldn't ask for a better knowledge base and to rely on them for any guidance you may have, so I wish you both the best of luck and stay safe.
You guys are on the hot seat. Commissioner Sadegi is here. Watch the square. No, seriously, I, I prefer with Community Kennis, I like municipalities that have local boys come up. Because they know where all the problems are going to be, where they're going to go drinking and all that other good stuff. Let's be honest, they probably get it themselves. So, but you guys are joining, in my opinion, you hear this, joining the best police force in the state of New Jersey. And I have talked to the, the chief about this, nobody leaves, they don't go to another place, they stay here. And that says something about the force itself. Veronica is saying, welcome to the family. It is a family, it's a brotherhood, and you guys are going to watch over us, and you're going to keep us safe, and I thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm a true Blue believer, I always have been, as a family, so I'm so honored to have you both here, but I'm also so proud of the rest of the Blue in this room too, because we're, we are a family, and, and we're grateful that Chief Kenny, Captain Sullivan, came to us and made this plan, and we kept with it, and it's just, it's, it's built us to where we have to be and continue, we are continuing with it, it's not done yet, we'll get it done though, and I'm just so, just so proud. It's a proud moment for the families, obviously, it's always, it's, that's their time to look at their sons and be so proud of them to, to take on this position, and, and thanks for being here. We, we grow good stuff here in Lacey, so we're very happy to have you. Congratulations. I'm just going to read one other appoint, we'll do the appointments, the chief is here to hear it, and then we'll go from there, okay? Resolution twenty twenty-four dash two thirty-six, appointing a special class one police officer.
Resolution of the township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, appointing Melanie Cruz as a class one special law enforcement officer.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes, of course. Chief, I don't believe the young person is here, right? Okay, all right, no problem, all right. Recession, we're going to take a recess in five minutes, so we can let the families do the, and all that, all the good stuff.
Hey, chief. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Chief? Congratulations.
You got it right. He's a good dude, he's a good dude. Bobby. 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 Bob. Can I, shut the door when they're done? Can you shut the do, can you shut the door when they're?
Jerry, how you doing, right? Is that? Did you spend your time down there? I was down in February, I'm in October. They made me, I made me three, and a week ago, I was having three trips to Square Groove. I love that lobster mac and cheese, it's a killer. Oh, it is. Between that and Ziggy Man. Oh, yeah. Man, I tell you, I'm on twenty pounds.
It's a Tuesday.
Yeah, that's it.
Dude, it's nice how we do it here. Well, you know, I was having a conversation with someone today, you know, about, you know, some of this, like Ocean City. you know, some of this, like Ocean City doesn't do business in progress. You know, it's so great that you can do that, you know, and that.
That wasn't exactly.
We have the wherewithal and we have the applicants.
My kids and.
Very cool.
My son's girlfriend.
He's got more of the temperament of his mother. Well, I know, Corinne's a pretty tough woman.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, kills me too. Just when I think he's getting better.
I know.
Slouching down.
He drives me insane.
Hey there.
You have to say that, if you're a lady, it's 2024, you have to say, I'm not handing away.
Take care, guys.
I know you do.
Good to see you, take care.
He looks just like his mother, Jack.
I was going to say something about that. One kid, I was going to say, you know, thank God, but.
Yeah, he looks just like his mother.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, okay.
It really is.
I wouldn't even make a baby comment if I didn't know.
Take care, Captain.
Everybody ready? That's great. Ready? You can be upset, it's funny. Resuming.
Resolution 2024-237, appointing a part-time clerk.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean Stadium, New Jersey, appointing Michelle Heller to the part-time position of clerk for the Township of Lacy. This is for a position that is open in the Department of Public Works.
Move it.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2024-238, accepting resignation.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean Stadium, New Jersey, accepting the resignation of an employee in the municipal court office.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2024-239, authorizing the placement of a lien on Block 1522, Lot 7.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean Stadium, New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and the cleaning up of property located at Block 1522, Lot 7, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs. This is in the amount of $237.45.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2024-240, authorizing the placement of a lien on Block 1633.02, Lot 5.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean Stadium, New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and the cleaning up of property located at Block 1633.02, Lot 5, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs. This is in the amount of $188.96.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2024-241, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean Stadium, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2024-242, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean Stadium, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills. This is in the amount of $2,581,384.55.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Motion to approve caucus minute meetings from August 1st, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Abstain.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Motion to approve township minute meetings from August 1st, 2024.
Move it. Second.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Abstain.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Motion to approve executive se, I'm sorry, did I say?
No, you're right.
Motion to approve executive session minute meetings from August 1st, 2024.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor, please, I need you abstaining on T-0035 on the bills, please.
And then I have an add-on?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-243, resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean Stadium, New Jersey, acknowledging the dissolution of the Bamber Lakes Fire Company and coverage continuation by the Forked River Fire Company due to lack of manpower and for economy and efficiency purposes.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. That is all I have. Okay. Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of short comments tonight and certainly want to welcome our two police officers like we did earlier formally. Like I said, I hope God walks with them and I hope they have long and prosperous careers here in Lacy Township. I also want to recognize Vanessa, our superintendent, who after 20 years has decided to retire. I've worked very well with Vanessa over the years and I wish her well and her next venture. So I appreciate her service and her partnership. I also wanted to mention that Deputy, excuse me, Mayor Juliano and I were at every blooming thing. We like to welcome new businesses into the town, especially Mayor Juliano has been way above board with this and not really missing any of them. So this isn't a new business, this is a business that expanded from 900 feet to 3,600 feet. And of course, Ms. LaRae was there too that day. It's really, you know, not only are we proud to make Lacy a business destination, but to see this business grow right at the corner of Route 9 and Lacy Road. They're a fine organization, they're a fine business and certainly, and with the mayor's approval, if you have a new business here in town, come into the microphone and talk about it for two minutes during our caucus and let's give you a kickoff the right way. We want to extend the olive branch. We just want to be there to support our business. Closing comments tonight about the Ninth Legislative District. The anchor benefit, this is for our seniors and we have many. The state's anchored property tax relief benefit will begin mailing letters to New Jersey homeowners and renters this week to confirm their automatic eligibility and to provide information to those who may be applying at the time. If you have questions and you need to talk with the hotline, 609-826-4282. I want to thank publicly Senator Amato, Assemblyman Rumpf and Assemblyman Meyer. You talk for hours about their advocacy, but this is something that's big for our seniors and other families and we're grateful for their advocacy right here on Lacy Road and Forked River. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Dykoff?
No comments, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennas?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just want to also wish our former superintendent the best of luck. She was always easy to talk to, I found, and was always answered the phone when I called her, so I appreciate her time here and the amount of help she gave us when we asked. The traffic signal at the corner of Haynes and Manchester Avenue is currently being reconstructed. There was supposed to be done prior to the start of the school year, but I don't think that's going to happen. And so I just want to let everybody know, I think the next time we meet, the school's going to be in session, is that correct?
That is correct.
It's hard to believe.
Summer's over.
So just leave, it's probably arguably one of the busiest intersections in town, if not the busiest, especially during school hour, so make sure you leave plenty of time because it's been backing up. I live near there, so it backs up a lot now. They have it down to like one, you know, one lane in each direction. So leave plenty of time in the mornings and afternoons if you're in that area of town. And the DEP is also, they're proposing new rules to increase the heights of building heights on houses on the water. They're taking public comment on it now. I'll have maybe some additional thoughts and comments on it at a later date, but it's just to let everybody know that they are talking about increasing the height of building structures on the water again. So, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Kennas. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. I too also want to thank Vanessa for all she's done. I think she's done a good job. And I wish her nothing but the best of luck in her next role. And today is a little bit of a sad day as we close up Bamber Lakes Fire. I don't know how long it's been, anybody know? Long time. And this isn't because we're unhappy with them. This is because they don't have enough volunteers. And by law, we have to do this. This is a sad day. And a lot of this, and I've talked to some of the firemen about this, the requisite that they have to do is like 340 hours of training before they can get on a truck. Think about that. You're a guy, you're in your 30s, family, couple of kids, 340 hours of training. It's your weekends for like 10 weeks straight. That's a lot to ask. And they're doing this on purpose because they want us to go to pay fire. And trust me, that would be very, very expensive for us. So this is a sad day and it's a shot across our bow that we've got to get some volunteers in here. So, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kennas. I just want to report that we had 76 calls from both of our fire companies in the last month. They do a fantastic job, they're on top of everything. And though the police are not here right now, I also want to commend them on handling of a no-electricity situation in our Spring Oaks facility here in town on Saturday. They jumped on it, they pulled in from the county and they didn't waste a minute to get the electric company out there and get things working and figured out. And God bless them, they took care of things the way they're supposed to. So it's a wonderful thing and we're very fortunate to have all them working for us. That's all I have and now I'll open the floor to the public. Anybody?
Jean, I'm motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, nobody raised their hand.
No one raised, I mean, you're gonna. I, listen, the motion or second?
I don't.
We should let him talk.
No, let him talk, let him talk.
Should let him talk.
He can do it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Um, good evening, uh, Mayor and committee members. Tonight, there's also, at the same exact time, is a meeting at the school, uh, which is actually important, because they're talking about the referendum and they're having their school board meeting. I ask that in the future, before you plan any of these meetings, the special meetings like this, that you coordinate with the other body, because right now, there's a lot going on in this town, and some of us can't be in two places at one time.
Their meeting started at 5 o'clock.
It's still going on.
I know, so.
Right, so you knew that in advance, right?
No, we planned our meeting before they planned theirs. Before they planned theirs.
Okay, so you guys need to talk with one another and clear with each other that there isn't, this is.
You know, I appreciate your effort in telling us what we need to do all the time, Mr. Bidnick, but, um, I'm letting you know that we set our plan, and if they chose to do it at the same time as us, that's not our fault. So maybe you tell them that, okay?
Okay, I will.
Good.
Don't worry about it.
Okay.
Two, was the cancellation fee paid to Johnson Controls?
Not yet.
And why is that?
I haven't gotten a final invoice to.
Now, why would they have allowed this to go on for eight months unless you really just put this on a pause and you're planning on moving forward with this at another time?
They haven't sent me an invoice yet. They have not sent us an invoice yet.
No kidding? Okay, well, maybe I'll call them and find out why. Okay, so two. Three, the zoning board meeting was a total disgrace. I really don't want members of this township committee to ever say that you actually care about this town and its residents, because you don't. The puppets on the zoning board did your bidding. Actions speak louder than words. If you cared about the citizens of this town and the quality of the lives, you would be fighting along with the citizens to not allow this quick check gas station to be built there. The people on Jones Way are going to be severely impacted by allowing this project to move forward. The lights and noise and distractions that will occur in that neighborhood are going to be disastrous for those people living over there. Where is the caring? Where is the empathy? There isn't any, so please don't ever get up here and say that you care about Lacey Township. The only people you care about are yourselves and those that are connected to you, and the rest of us taxpayers and the citizens of this town, well, we could all go to hell. It's really despicable and disgraceful, so at least be honest with yourselves and stop being phonies. On another note, selling a gifted property that was given to the residents of Lacey Township with the understanding that it was to be kept is another example of this current body's lack of moral stature. This is another prime example of your clear lack of caring, concern for the people you are elected to serve. No one wants another gas station there. Our history cannot be replaced. What you consider progress, others see as destruction. At the last meeting, I was cut off by the mayor when I was trying to make my public comments. The person before me, who was a connected person to this committee and who works for the town, spoke for six minutes and 28 seconds. She was not cut off, I actually watched the video and timed it. I would appreciate that you never do anything like that to me or any other taxpaying citizen ever again. I know for a fact that if that ever happens to me, I'll be filing a First Amendment civil rights lawsuit. If you're going to break the rules for one, you're going to have to break the rules for all. My suggestion is that you just get rid of the five-minute rule, which was directed by the Mayor Juliano, and we won't ever have this problem again. Can the nepotism in Lacey Township be ever more obvious than what is happening right now? I discussed this 12 years ago in front of the Township Committee. I actually presented a nepotism policy. It's actually gotten a lot worse since then. For example, it doesn't help the town administrator's husband sitting on the zoning committee, and now her half-brother is running for Township Committee. Just the appearance of this leads to the possibilities of individuals being compromised or conflicted. Mr. Laurie will not be able to vote.
That's LaRae, by the way. Get the name correct, please.
Mr. LaRae.
Thank you.
Will not be able to vote on the job performance or any raises for the most important person who works for this town if he is elected. Why vote for someone who is so obviously conflicted? It just all gets, looks really bad, and maybe the Township Committee just doesn't care. But you can't claim that everything in this town is squeaky clean and rosy when this type of stuff is happening right in front of our eyes. It just smells from here to high heaven, and it isn't meant to be personal, it's just obvious observations whether you like it or not. I don't know any of you personally, so I'm speaking as a citizen and a taxpayer. I don't know you personally, do I, Mayor Juliano? No. All right. So it can't be made personal. These are my political observations in our community.
You're welcome to them.
Right, and many people feel this way, so I'm just saying out loud, but a lot of people won't say. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to speak from the audience before we, Mr. Bender, come on up?
Barry Bender's somewhere in Ocean, uh, Ocean County, I'm saying Ocean County, geez. I attended the, uh, Board of Adjustment meeting, was Board of Adjustment, right? That's who I was at? I get them confused. Uh, and a lot of people were angry with that, and, and please don't take any of this personally, but my feeling is, with the situation, um, at the corner of Route 9 and Lacey Road, was a lack of planning, uh, because there are homes there. And you know, my deep feeling is that, I feel that that property never should have been sold, that it should have been kept by the township, there's lots of properties we can sell, and that one has a, a very deep meaning to many, many citizens in this township. And I don't blame the, the Board of Adjustment, I blame the Township Committee for the sale of that, so I'll just leave it at that. Thank you much.
Anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Mr. LaRae?
I wasn't going to, but, uh, well, first of all, like Barry, he's somewhere in Lacey Township, me too, lifelong in Lacey Township. But first, I want to thank Mr. Bidnick for announcing to the town that I am running for Township Committee. Second of all, if somebody's gonna come up here and use my name, they better know me. I've been involved in boards in this town for over 44 years. I've never seen this gentleman in front of any board or attending any meeting I've ever been at. I sit here respectfully, learn from the committee and comments, and I've actually commented to him many a times on the research he does, because I respect him for that. If he knew me, number one, whether my sister's the administrator or not, he would know there's no issue there. Number two, one of the biggest things people complain about is why isn't this the small town it always is? Lacey's still got that small-town feel. Whereas the school board, public works, whatever, you're gonna run into people you know or whatever. Good example of this is just what's going on with our schools right now, which the committee has nothing to do. But we sit here, we come up, and we badger, and we bring up things that a lot of times may be truthful, maybe not, maybe need to be, but you have a situation, nobody wants to run for these positions. I'm 68 years old, I've been asked many a times to run for this position. I've turned it down constantly. I'm retired, I have grandkids, and I love this town, I respect this town. Yes, everything changes and needs work, but when you have a small town, whether it went from 5,000 to 30,000, when you come up here and speak, no matter who you are, you do not speak for everybody. Because if there was as many problems as it's portrayed to be at these meetings, these meetings would be a lot better attended. Because it really floors me to know, even with our school board right now, there's a lot of controversy. And yet, everybody's throwing stones, and sometimes maybe rightly, but the school board members are running unopposed. So, there's no excuse for that.
No, there isn't.
Why am I running? There aren't many people that want to do this. You know what? You're sitting up there getting beat up for basically a token more than a volunteer, because you don't get paid much for being up there. But again, I want to thank you for announcing that I'm running, and, you know what? People that know me, I'm not here to convince anybody to vote for me. Either like me, or you don't, you got your beliefs, or you don't have your beliefs. But I want to thank everybody, whether it's on that side of the, uh, dais or this side, for their comments and their input. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Come on up, please.
Hello.
How are you?
Forked River. I wanted to know, when will this, uh, when will you meet the next time?
It's the second, as of September, we meet the second and fourth Thursday of the month.
Okay.
September 12th.
September 12th is the date.
Okay, all right, well.
We have a fabulous website. I don't seem, a lot of people don't seem to use it. It has every information you need to know is on our website.
Or call, I mean, any, any question you have, be free to call. I mean, 693-1100 is a pretty easy phone number.
Question for a reason. Okay. This meeting is always supposed to take place on a Thursday evening, two times in a month.
Right.
Very odd to have it on a Monday night.
Except for the summer, where we have one meeting a month.
Today's Tuesday.
May Tuesday.
Yeah, we had some scheduling conflicts with, um, getting, alright, normally in the summer, we don't have two meetings a month, we only have one meeting a month.
Right.
But due to certain bills that needed to be paid tonight, and due to scheduling conflicts with getting those bills ready to get out, the person's on vacation, we needed to back it up to Tuesday for this month, and this is just considered as, yeah, we scheduled it as a special meeting, and then we needed to get these gentlemen, um, on as well, because they do need to spend some time at field training and stuff, um, by a certain date with the, with the, um, police training commission.
But we've had plenty of advertisement about this, it's not like it wasn't advertised.
I understand all that, but I go by the calendar that you hand out every year.
Yeah, yes, and this, this meeting was not in the calendar, either was a Thursday meeting for the fourth Thursday of the month.
I think it states when every, uh, all the different, uh, groups meet, it's on, on one of the pages, and it's the second, the second and fourth.
Yes.
Thursday of the month. So what I'm saying is, and the other meeting you had last month was at a different time, too. I mean, it, it, it does get confusing, and it also says that it's supposed to start at 6:30, so, um, and you changed the time after the printing of the calendar went out.
That's correct, yes.
That's correct.
It's just that it's, it does become very confusing, and, and now we, and now we know that the school board is having a meeting in the same time this was, and you said you decided on your time first, but it, it's just confusing. So it would be nice if you could really stick to what you say you're doing. I mean, you, you should be the ones to decide, and, and it's written down, maybe the other, you should be checking to find out that they're not scheduling something.
I can't be responsible for what they do, I can only be responsible for what we do, and we did post this first, they chose to grab the same day, I don't know why, and it's not, you know, it's not my place to know why, okay? I don't know what to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience that would like to speak?
My name is Neil Piero, I live at 835 Tiller Drive. I'd like to ask if anyone knows if there are any plans or any requests have been made, either of the municipal government or eventually the state government, to make another alteration at the intersection of Lacey Road and Route 9? Do you know of any? I'm sorry?
We own that road, so it's not, and the, the state has not reached out to us to make any indication that there's making any changes besides the county going to pave Lacey Road from the intersection of Route 9 all the way to the parkway.
My question really, and you know it, applies to the people who are developing that property. Do you know of any intent on their part to make any alter?
That was asked at the zoning board meeting. Um, I don't think you stayed around long enough to hear that. That was asked at the zoning board meeting, there are no entrances or exits on Route 9. There were residents that did ask about, um, a possible, I'm gonna say right turn lane onto Jones Road, I think I'm right about that, right, Barry?
Well, right turn from the south, left turn from the north.
Right, alright, going north, they wanted like, um, a turn lane, so that, or a lane there, but there's no application, and the DOT took, um, no interest in the application to have them make any improvements at that intersection, because they're not changing the frontage at all.
Very good, okay. So I'd like to just make one comment to the mayor.
Sure.
The way you sound, it's as if the Board of Education is some foreign country.
It's, it's not, it's just that I don't get to say anything to them, sir, I don't, I don't, I don't.
I'm not saying you have any control.
Yes.
But I could hardly believe that if you communicate with the superintendent, that you two can't work out, or even the acting superintendent, work out some kind of a.
Let me interrupt you, because we had the same situation when I was mayor, and we had a meeting, and they scheduled a meeting. You know, I've been here 20 years, I can probably count on one hand the amount of times that we've had to have a special meeting, or, so basically, you know, some people have made it sound.
I'm not really concerned about the meeting.
You're asking a question, so let me explain, look, I'm not interrupting you, we're not timing you.
Well. Between the municipal government and the Board of Education. All I'm saying is.
So this is interesting.
It's a family.
Okay, so, it's interesting that you're saying this, because at the last meeting, I got told that I should not be interfering in anything that goes on at the Board of Education.
Well, you know better.
Okay?
You know better.
And it's because I tried to help them, I'm a problem, but now, because I'm saying I can't make decisions for them, I'm, I'm being, it's an attitude.
Right, okay, I'm, all I'm trying to say is. Uh, it sounds as if they're a foreign country. I'm telling you that I think the general public would be better served if there was harmony.
Okay, so there is harmony, we have, we have no problems. You all are making a fuss over one incident tonight, being that the meeting is there. If that meeting was so important, then everybody should be over there.
I don't care about the meeting, I'm really talking about how you talk about your relationship with the Board of Ed, and it just sounds strange, that's all.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Thank you, Mr. Dykoff.
All in favor?
Aye. No further business.